I call this meeting of the Cedar Woolley City Council to order. Thank you for coming. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, that brings us to the consent calendar. Tonight we have items A through J. What is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, items A through J.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Councilmember Lemley and seconded by Councilmember Judith Dunleigh. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And it carries unanimously. Next up is a fun thing for me. It's a proclamation expressing our gratitude to our fantastic fire department, but they do a great job all the time, but they had a particularly demanding day. And usually I don't read the whole thing because it's long, but I think it, we've got some time and I do want to read it all. So whereas the Cedar Woolley Fire Department is staffed by a combination of volunteers, residents, part-time and full-time employees, under the leadership of Chief Dean Klinger, Assistant Chief Todd Olson, and a dedicated team of volunteer officers, and whereas the Cedar Woolley Fire Department has experienced significant increases in call volume annually, as well as significant increases in training requirements over the years, and whereas this call volume was recognized as acute on August 11th, 2017, when the department was dispatched to 19 calls in one day, and whereas August 11th, 2017 marked one of the highest single day call volumes excluding disasters, and included a variety of calls, including motor vehicle accidents, fires, calls for emergency medical services, and whereas at one point during the day, Cedar Woolley Fire Department was staffing and operating both of its transport-capable aid units, as well as the backup aid unit provided by the Central Valley Ambulance Authority, and the events of August 11th, 2017 represented the mission of the Cedar Woolley Fire Department to assist people in need in our community and the core values of the department with the Cedar Woolley way of getting the job done. Now, therefore, I, Keith Waggoner, Mayor of Cedar Woolley, do proclaim the appreciation of the city for the men and women of the Cedar Woolley Fire Department, volunteers, residents, part-time and full-time employees, and encourage the citizens of Cedar Woolley to recognize this significant role of the Cedar Woolley Fire Department in our community and thank them for their service. And I see we have someone here to accept the award. Come on up.
I'm going to come down. Shake your hand.
And I don't wish any more days like that upon you, but it's good to know we can handle it. Okay, this brings us to item five, public comment period. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and I will give you three minutes. Mary.
Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson. I live at 928 Beachley Road in Cedar Woolley. Before you tonight, you see a cautionary tale. Never again let anyone tell you that their vote doesn't matter. I stand before you tonight, having lost an election by one vote. Feel free to say to anyone who says their vote is unimportant, remember Mary Anderson. I ran on the premise that I was not afraid to stand up at City Hall for the people. So as an upright person, I am conscientiously here tonight to tell you, to share with you some of those, the people, the concerns that I heard throughout the city as I was campaigning. But first, I would like to thank, give a shout out to a couple of city council members. As I have observed, city council meetings for over a year and a half now routinely, there are two members who have consistently and honestly spoken up for the people, and I wish to recognize them tonight. They are people who have taken on things at City Hall and brought issues to the attention of each other, and I would like to acknowledge them tonight. One of them, of course, is Chuck Owens, who has consistently stood up for the people, and I'm very grateful for his service. The other one, a bit surprisingly for some, but I have observed for the past year and a half, this person has repeatedly brought up issues and occasionally has been shot down and even made an object of ridicule for which I did not appreciate. But this person has consistently tried to bring up issues to the city council, and I would like to recognize Brent Sandstrom and thank him for his service as well. Okay, there are a couple of things that you should be aware of, that people are concerned about. As I walk the streets of Cedar Woolley, I learned a lot of things about Cedar Woolley. One thing is that people are grateful that the streets are being attended to, so that is a good thing. However, one person, one man was incensed. He said, "One person present here tonight ran on the premise and was elected that the city sidewalks would be addressed." And this gentleman was incensed because, yes, in the wealthier parts of Cedar Woolley and the more public aspects of Cedar Woolley, the sidewalks do look good. But in some of the poorer or less well-traveled neighborhoods, the sidewalks are disgraceful. And I can attest to that because I nearly fell into the street one time, merely just trying to cross the road, leaving the sidewalk. So there are dangerous sidewalks in Cedar Woolley, and people are not happy about them. You need to be aware of that. Another gentleman told me how outraged he was that he wanted to start a business in Cedar Woolley, and when he approached the city on it, discovered that he would have to pay in, I don't know, impact mitigation, some sort of fees, $70,000. And I don't know about you, but I don't have that kind of capital sitting around to start a business, and he didn't either. And he was furious that he could not progress. He wants to bring a business to Cedar Woolley, and he cannot because of that kind of fee structure. So I want you to consider that.
About 30 seconds.
Okay. There are many other things I might have to come to yet another city council meeting to let you know about them. One thing that was expressed to me by one downtown business was that the Chamber of Commerce, he felt that the Chamber of Commerce was not doing its job properly. He said, "Bury, bury, days had received more publication and more publicity in Cedar Woolley than alone blast from the past," and I can attest to that because we received questions at the library, people trying to find out more about it, not on the posters, not on the website, were the times and areas of events. So those are just a few things that you need to be aware of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Could you come up on the side?
You may.
So, for the sidewalks, I can tell you that that was one thing that I was concerned about too. But coming into office, I realized that actually the sidewalks are the owners, the homeowner's responsibility. So that was the first thing that I did when I got into office, when I realized that. I actually paid to have my sidewalk repaired so that people wouldn't trip. So unfortunately, that's the way it's working here in Cedar Woolley. The city does help out. Once you clear it out and you need the gravel laid before you pour the cement, they will bring in the gravel. So the city just try to work with that. But just so you know, it's, you know, as council members, our hands are kind of tied, so.
And that's across the state. Anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Philip Murray. I live at 223 State Street. And if you're talking about sidewalks, and you're going to hand over $50,000 of taxpayers' money, if I'm not mistaken, to the YMCA. That $50,000 would make about 50 truckloads of cement, 10-yard truckloads, that would do six-foot wide sidewalk, 4,500 feet, six inches thick. And that would fix just about all the sidewalks around here and then make the ramps for handicapped and everything on them, which you are way behind on. And then, let's see. Uh, boy, let's see. That was for, let's see. The public library, it should be like if you go to the movie theater. If you want to go, you pay at the door and you get to watch what you want, instead of everybody paying for a public library and for the handful of people that go to it. That's just my personal opinion. So, Community Action says there's 10,540 people, and they have helped 4,250 people in Cedar Woolley. Well, that, that leaves the rest of the people having to pay the taxes for everything, all the raises on all the taxes you want to do. And a lot of those people that got helped are on low income. And if you've raised taxes for the library for $2.26 per thousand, their rent will go up. You may put more people in that category. That's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you. I do have a question. What's a $2.26?
Twenty-six cents, I think you said, for a thousand?
Anybody else for public comment? Sir?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Carl DeYoung, and I live at 103 Warner Street. And I am here at the bequest of Corinne Johnson with Cedar Woolley Arts Council to remind everyone to come out for art in the park and the Community Talent Show on Sunday down at Overfront Park from 1 to 5. It should be great. There will be open mics, so I'd love to see some of the talent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment period at this time, and we'll move on to item six, Proposed Amendment to the Definition of the Building Height. This is a second reading. It's John's, and it's on page 47 to 55 of your packet.
Okay, so, as we discussed at the first reading of this, this is a minor adjustment to the definition of the building height, and it, the long and short of it is, it changes the measurement from the very peak of a roof, which is the way the planning code defines it, to change the planning code to match the building code, which defines the height of a roof as the mean between the highest eve and the lowest eve on the highest part of a roof. So, basically brings it down to the middle of the gable section. This is a change to the zoning code, and it would match the building code definition for building height. And it would, for a single-family house, would only lower the, lower that amount of couple of feet. And that's about it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to discuss more, but it's really quite a simple change.
I was curious. I saw where, right now, it's 35, for a three-story building, it's 35 feet. So, but I saw, I didn't see anywhere where it put a limit, a cap on how high it actually can be built. Have you changed that at all, or are you just leaving it open based upon the measurements that you just gave?
So this is, this is not a change to the maximum building height that would be allowed. Each zone, each zoning district has its own maximum building height. In the R7, the R5, all the residential zones, the maximum building height is 35 feet. That will not change. It will still remain 35 feet. In other zones, it's, it's higher, it's up to 60 feet, I think, in the central business district, under certain conditions.
But it's where it's measured from that changes, right?
But the change is just how we actually perform the measurement, so, they would, you know, the, now, so the very, as I say, in the residential zone, the very peak might be over 35 feet, but if you measure from the peak down to the eve, it would be that midpoint in between there, which is the definition, by definition, would be the building height. And it's a little odd, but that's the way the building code does it for many reasons. You know, that's the International Building Code, because it takes into account a lot of oddly shaped buildings and where the, where the ground level is and all of that. So it's a more sophisticated way of measuring it now, the proposed change.
Any other question? It's your pleasure. That would be...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 1881, Tax 17, an ordinance of the city Cedar Woolley, adopting amendments to Chapter 17, Tax 04, of the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, amending the definition of height of a structure.
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Corningey, to approve ordinance 1881, Tax 17, an ordinance adopting amendments to Chapter 17.04 of the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, amending the definition of the height of a structure. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And it carries. Okay, item seven, resolution, closing a portion of Talcott Street at Central Elementary School. This is also a second reading, and starts on page 56 of your packet.
So there are no changes between the first draft and the second draft of this particular resolution. As we discussed last time, it would close Talcott Street at the current closure location, beginning for the school year and running for one year as a trial period. And I didn't make any changes. I didn't remember it until tonight, so we could pull that part out, but, you know, somebody might want to use it.
It is, but I'd go in 25 years.
So, that would be Resolution 971-17.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve Resolution Number 971-17, a resolution of the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, closing a portion of Talcott Street.
Next. A motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember Owen, to approve Resolution 971, Tax 17, closing portion of Talcott Street, and I'll just add verbiage "at" the Central Elementary School.
No, went it all the way.
No, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And the motion carries. So on to new business. Item eight is a proposed annexation, Valley High Investments Property, north of city limits. It's page 59 to 65 in your packet. John?
Okay, so, as the city council, and hopefully most of the people in the audience remember, we, the, the city was successful in expanding our urban growth area in 2016. Now that the property north of the city limits is in the urban growth area, we have one property owner that has requested that their property be included in the city of Cedar Woolley, or city limits. The way annexations work is, property owners start the initiation process. They submit a letter to the city saying that they would like to come into the city. Per the state, the state RCW regulations on annexations, the first step in the process once a, once a applicant submits a request for annexation, is for the city council to hold a meeting with the applicant to determine if the city council is interested at this time to, to entertain the annexation. So what the city council will consider is, will the city be able to provide services to the area if it's annexed? The city will determine if, you know, just based on the, the city's knowledge of the area, is the city ready to annex the area? Now, just by putting in the urban growth area, we've, we've acknowledged that this is the direction that we want to grow, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to annex anything. But generally, we've stated that we're interested in annexing in the long run. Now is the time for us to decide if we're capable at the moment. The agent of the property owner is in the audience tonight, so you could ask questions if necessary. This is a little outside of how normal city council meetings meet, and certainly the way the city council runs our meetings, where we have first and second reads on something. But this is a state regulation, that we have a meeting with it, and whenever we have a meeting with the city council, it's a public meeting, so we're holding it, the city council meeting. And so what we're looking for today is guidance from the council, is whether or not they're interested in entertaining the annexation. If they're, if the city council is interested in annexing, they've got several choices, and a couple of issues that the state regulations require the city council to address at this time. First, this, the property owner has requested that their 20 acres, 20-plus acres are included in the annexation. The city council has the ability to geographically modify a annexation request. So that means maybe you say, well, maybe not all of the parcels that they're requesting, or you can say, this is what the city of Cedar Woolley has done in the past, is to expand the, or expand the annexation. And by that, what I mean is, it's a big process for the council and the, and the city and the property owners to go through an annexation. There's a lot of state regulations to follow, and it just takes a lot of time. So, what we've done in the past is, once we've received an initiation request and the council has said, yes, we're interested in continuing with the annexation, the council has said, well, let's also talk to the nearby property owners and see if anybody else in the area is interested in annexing, because if they are, we'd hate to get halfway through this process, and then somebody else initiate another annexation, and we, we could combine it all into one process. So what that means is, myself and the applicant would work together to send letters to the other property owners nearby in the urban growth area and ask if they're interested in participating in this annexation. Give them some heads up, notice that it's going on before we actually move forward with the process. And then we can draw a definitive line around the area that would, would, could possibly be annexed. We know anecdotally that the property owners on the other side of Highway 9 from this proposed annexation have requested city sewer from the city in the past. They were unable, we were unable to provide that to them because they were not in the urban growth area. Now they are in the urban growth area, so if we're providing sewer to properties, they really should be in the city limits. So it would be, this would be the opportunity for them to join the annexation in order to obtain city services, such as sewer. And there's a police station, there are a fire station across the street, so they get superior fire service, should they come into the city. Right, Tom?
We did it now and then.
That is true. We do have, we generally serve, whoever gets their fastest serves in any, serves an area anyway, but they would get better police service. So, we would, we'd like to, if we do go forward, send a letter out to a few of the property owners nearby and see if other property owners are interested in annexing. So, that's the first motion that you see, is, under the recommendations, is, we recommend that if the city council is interested in entertaining an annexation, that we contact the property owners and look to geographically modify and enlarge the area that's been requested to be annexed in, just for the sake of bringing in people that might already be interested. There's two other portions that the state revised code of Washington require, and that's to determine if the city will require the simultaneous adoption of a proposed zoning regulation when, when the area is ultimately annexed. So what that means is, what would the zoning be if an area annexed? Under our comprehensive plan, and showing in the comprehensive plan map, which is on page 67, I believe, is the, I'm sorry, 65, it shows an underlying zoning that the city has adopted, even though it's not in the urban growth, even though it's not in the city limits yet. And for most of the area around there, it's going to be residential five, there's a small portion of mixed commercial, there's, and then there's some properties in what we've identified as the residential one, environmentally least sensitive neighborhood, that's around Bottomless Lake. So those, we've pre-designated some zoning designations should the property ever annex. So if, if we do, do propose an annexation, then we would recommend that the zoning is as designated in the comprehensive plan. That is the, the second part of the state requirements that the council would address at this meeting. The third part is, would the city council require that the newly annexed properties pay any portion of the existing indebtedness by the area to be annexed? So would the annexed area pay the same levies and tax rates as the rest of the city? Of course, we've, in the past, we've done that. It seems to make sense. I think that allows, under certain circumstances, to charge different levy rates, but we wouldn't recommend as much. We would, staff recommends that the city would require that the area pay the same, same portion of the taxes and indebtedness as the rest of the city. So those are the three, three parts going on. I've listed three motions, so just to give guidance to the applicant, because the next step would be, should the city agree to the annexation and make motions here, they, the next step is for them to go out and get a full petition. We're recommending that we put an extra step in between to make sure, to see if there's any other property owners that are interested, and then we geographically modify the area. Then we would accept a full petition from the annexation requesters. Just one, as a point of emphasis, annexations are requests from the public to become part of the city. They're not typically city-driven. There are ways where cities can initiate annexations. That is not the case here, and rarely is the case in Cedar Woolley. It's, it's an applicant-driven process. There's lots of nuances and details that I can address if you would like. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thanks. So, since we have a property owner here, council, are you interested in hearing from the property owner?
Yeah.
So, sir, I don't know your name, I'm sorry. But please introduce yourself, and I'll give you about three minutes to talk about this, and then council may have some questions for you.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilman Mayor, for having us sign them up. I'm David Sherman from Island Associates. I'm the representative for Valley High Investment, who's the property owner, and I'm the one who put the petition, the intent together. So, and also PO Box 911 Oak Harbor is, is my address. So, one is, we've, of course, we're in agreement with the staff recommendations, we've read those, also with the zoning that exists now. We don't have any conflicts with that. So there's, there's really little that we have to, or say none, that we have to object to. We just look to go forward. Yes?
I have a question. I'm just curious. I didn't know there was mixed commercial, that little piece of mixed commercial there. What's the history on that?
Well, so, it wasn't mixed commercial. That was something that your planning department, when they took it forward, to bring it to the, into the UGA, with the county, they had to place that. And within their building lands analysis, they showed you needing that amount of property. So they, they have chosen that as a kind of a north entrance into your city, that they would say, hey, let's put something here that's more than houses. Something, again, it's pretty defined in your mixed commercial code of what can go there. I think the most useful one is where there's commercial below, residential above, residents above. That's kind of a very unique thing coming about lately. But it, it gives you a lot of different choices to do there. It's not, it's not completely restricted to only a gas station, say. Some people hear commercial and think it's just, well, they isolate that. But there is quite a bit to choose from in that. And so it wasn't something we did. We did go through the process throughout that and didn't object. We were advised along the way, and we thought, yeah, that's... We were advised along the way, and we thought, yeah, that's, we're okay with that, anyway. So that's why we know about it.
So to round that out a little bit, the planning commission during its review of the urban growth area size and zoning made a recommendation that a small part, because it would be a new gateway to the city, they felt there would be a logical location to have some services available. So they recommended designating it, it's, I want to say it's 6.7 acres of mixed commercial along Highway 9 at the intersection of Bassett. And then their recommendation went through the city council and then was approved by city council. City council sent their approval to the county, and the county approved it also. So the county has a commercial zoning, urban rural designation there now, basically a placeholder for some sort of commercial at that intersection.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I'm having trouble telling the colors. It looks gray to me. Is it industrial colored on the map here, or is that just the way, because the key is far from the color?
Oh.
Which color, which part are you?
The proposed annexation Valley High Investments map. There's a gray stripe on the frontage of Highway 9 that looks to me to be the same color, yeah.
It's blue.
Or blue. Is it this blue?
No, it's just the boundary of the property.
No, 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 this swath, see that color inside there? Yeah.
That's pink, or that's the mixed commercial.
That's the same colors?
This is.
Oh, okay. That's my colorblind. It looked industrial to me.
You should start with that.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Start with the, by the way, I'm colorblind.
Okay.
Got it?
I still see industrial, but, okay. If you think it's the same color, then that's fine.
Thank you.
We can mess with you on this now. Any other questions from council? You can have your seat. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
I do have another question, but not for him.
Okay.
Sorry, I was, I'm sorry.
Are you on this topic?
Come to the mic, I'll give you three minutes.
I have no objection over the annexation. The only thing you do see in there that I think you're in there in, it is these property lines. Now, going back in history, and I don't know how far you're going to go back on this, the council voted there'd be no more annexations cutting across the field. You follow what I'm saying? If you're going to have an annexation, you go down Third Street, Down Street, turn, come down Sixth Street into Oak Street. So everybody knows where it's at. It sounds like something, so what? Most people don't make any difference. The man sitting over there in blue, it can have a difference. The argument I used when I was on the council before we got this through, Oldham Road Road, we go across the field out there, and I was arguing, let's take, move that line over on St. with Road Road. Somebody asked, why? Okay, fine. There's a homicide, as an example, or any major crime out in the middle of that field. Nobody knows where the city limits is. Now you're putting the city police to the spot, because if they act properly, they will themselves up for a big lawsuit. And this is exactly what you've got here. Two sides of that are, it's clear, but the west side of it and the south side of it, part of it, is field it looks to me like, as I recall that property up there. I'm pretty well versed in that property, because at one time, I almost bought a chunk of property right next to the old fire station up there. So I know pretty much what the ground is. What you're going to do is, you're coming across a field up there and saying, this is our city limits. Okay? When some major crime happens out there, who's going to be the first ones on scene? Our people, Seadrwelly. Okay, so you get up there, they don't know for sure where it's at, so they back off on it, thinking it's maybe county property. It can cause a problem. So I say, and before somebody asks a question, my memory isn't that good. I don't remember when this was, but I do remember, it was back several years ago, we did vote that any annexations would have to be within parameters that the average person would know where you were at.
You've got about 30 seconds.
Okay.
I do.
I understand what I'm getting at there. I say, I'm not talking against annexation, I'm just looking at the legalities down the road that our police department could walk into.
Okay, thank you, Harold.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jermaine.
The area that's on the other side, on the north side of Bottomless Lake, it's like right on the edge there, and that's environmentally sensitive area, but then it's right on the edge.
Everything brown would be, it's just a designation. It's the area, those properties are all around the lake, and so there's like topography and wetlands and creeks all throughout that area, so all the brown area.
But then, right, but see, right north of the lake is so close to that border.
Yeah, but that's actually, that's actually just a pasture.
For now?
Yeah.
For now.
So that's, that's why that was designated as it is, because it actually doesn't have the same constraints as the rest of those properties. And you can see, it's a little difficult to see from this map, but the white lines through there are the property lines, and those property lines have evolved over the years based on the topography and the creeks in there. So that's why you get these odd-shaped parcels in there around the lake. North of the lake, where it goes back to the yellow, it's easier to draw lines on. There's less constraint, so. And to address Mr. Bytler's comments, I think he makes a very valid point, to where the property lines can be logical, so the police and fire can understand where the city limits are. However, we're starting to get out in the area where there are no roads, so it would be, it would be a little bit difficult to define lines in this area because there are no existing street grids. Just something else for the council to consider. And of course, today, we're not considering an annexation. We're considering whether, whether we should even consider an annexation, just by, if the council makes a motion today to entertain the annexation petition, it does not bind the city council to approving an annexation in the future, although it would seem like a logical conclusion, but it's not actually necessary that the council do so.
So John, the motion's on page 60. Those are the recommendations of the planning commission as well?
The planning commission. That's just staff.
Because they won't get to it until...
The planning commission does not review annexations. This is strictly council matter. And ultimately, the review for this would go to the Boundary Review Board. If they invoke their, if the city does accept a petition in the future, and then it would go to the Boundary Review Board, they would hold public hearings on it if they feel it's necessary.
Okay. Mr. Anderson.
May I just ask, John, a quick question?
You have to ask it from the mic, and I'll give you three minutes.
I have to look up here.
Well, we got to get it recorded. You wouldn't want to be missed.
Anderson, Helia Anderson, 928 Beach, Seadrwelly. John, what is this area currently zoned for? That's my question. Thank you very much.
Well, currently, it's in the, it's in the county. It's not in the city limits, so I can, I can look up what their zoning designation for the area is, if you can give me just, it's urban reserve residential and urban reserve commercial industrial. So they've designated, they've designated zoning for urban growth areas that reflect our proposed zoning.
Okay.
They don't match, but they, it's kind of a footholder. Yeah, placeholder.
Okay. Anything else, council? So there's...
And I'm just, I'm looking at an aerial photo, and right now, it just looks like fields and trees, and that little jot that he's talking about that kind of cuts through is trees.
That section's actually owned by Skagit County. It's an old mine for them. It's a gravel pit, so you could try to include it, but I would suspect that may trigger the Boundary Review Board's jurisdiction at the request of the county, because why would they want it to be in the city, right? I mean, there's no advantage to them. It's not, it's not a piece that's going to be developed intensively if it's going to be continued in their current use. But both, there are two parcels that would complete, you know, the section that Harold's talking about. They're both owned by Skagit County, and they're the two that run between the old Senator Sapp property and Valley High's property.
Council, what's your pleasure? There's three suggested motions there.
I would like to make a motion to continue the annexation process, determine if other property owners in the UGA are interested in participating in the annexation process and geographically modify the annexation area accordingly.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Dunley and seconded by Councilmember Carnegie to continue the annexation process, determine if other property owners in the UGA are interested in participating in the annexation process, and geographically modify the annexation area accordingly. Is there a further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The second motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the city require the simultaneous adoption of a proposed zoning regulation.
Motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie, requiring the city to simultaneously adopt proposed zoning regulations. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And lastly...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the city require the assumption of all or of any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed.
Second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Kinzer, seconded by Councilmember Johnson, requiring the city the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And it carries. Thank you, council. Next item, item nine, library consortium interlocal agreement with the Central Skagit Rural Partial County Library District. This is a first reading. It's on page 66 and 72 of your packets. Aaron.
Yeah, so the objective of this agreement is to allow the Seadrwelly Public Library and the Central Skagit Library, as well as the Bookmobile, so all three locations to have the same access to the same library system software, essentially. So the database of patrons, as well as the database of available materials and the collections would be the same at any of the three locations, and indeed, your library card, regardless of where it was issued, at the district or at the city, would work at any of those three locations. So the consortium agreement brings the district into the city's ILS system, which is through TLC, the Library Corporation, and has the district paying its share of costs for coming into that ILS system. It's pretty straightforward. You can see on page two, the city library board has recommended moving forward, did so back in May. It's taken me some time to really understand what we're trying to accomplish, and, you know, I've met with Deborah and Gene, oh, I don't know, probably three or four times on this topic, and today, we had, I think, a productive conversation with TLC, both their technical and their sales folks, to really understand how it would be implemented. And I'm comfortable that we can, we can get the job done. Now, I didn't appreciate, when I put this in the packet, that the city's contract with TLC actually ends at the end of August. So I guess we're normally a September to August user, and we have a server maintenance agreement that also ends at the end of August. So from the city side, we're going to need to do something before your next meeting. I think we can, if you'd like to maintain this as a first reading and have a second reading next time, I think we can, we can bring the district in at that time, but, you know, we do need to do something with TLC, kind of around that September one time, or else we'd be asking them just to grant us a little latitude while we work through the government process. Cost-wise, just so you know what's going on, we at the city spend about $7,900 a year for TLC. The district in year one would be spending about $6,400 additional dollars. The reason there's so much cost given, well, let me back up. Costs are based on size of collection and number of stations that are accessing various modules of the system, as well as the number of locations that are licensed. So there's a formula that you can calculate all that out. Year one costs, though, are based upon the number of records that come into the system. So for the district, they've got about $9,000 versus the city is at about $60,000. So year one has a significantly higher cost for the district. Once year one's over, then the combined cost goes to somewhere just over $8,000, actually, maybe as low as $8,200. So significant savings are achieved through working together on something like that. If the district were to go it alone, their year one cost would be closer to $19,000 versus the $6,400. So you can see there's a real advantage to working through the consortium. Of course, the main objective wasn't really to save money on this. The main objective was to provide patrons of both parties the ability to exercise their reciprocal borrowing privileges without having to actually get dual-issued cards, and by having broader access to the cataloguing system. This pathway, I believe, also provides us an opportunity to bring the school district in when the time is right. So the school district issued cards, and this'll, this'll capture the school kids who are located outside of the district. By bringing the library's collection into the same database, we can have that agreement extend to the schools. So this is a model that's in use currently in Jefferson County, where there's a city library, a county library, three school districts, and a maritime heritage center, all engaged in the same consortium utilizing the same ILS. So we're not really, you know, breaking new ground here, it's just new ground for us. But it does provide the auditors with the measure of consideration that's necessary to solve the, how come these school kids can't use our library issue? So that's kind of thinking forward. That's a pathway to get broader coverage, as well as opening up access to more books. Any questions I can answer on this? If not, we've got the chairman of our board of trustees here as well. I'm sure he's happy to answer any questions from the board's perspective.
Well, I have a, go ahead, Brett.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. I know there was some concern about privacy when it was brought up at the library board meeting, and I wanted to know, is there a way that we can possibly create like an opt-out for people who may feel concerned with the sharing of the information, but maybe not have the advantage of using the shared services?
No.
Why?
That is not, so the way the system works is, it is a single system, so there wouldn't be patrons who would somehow only be visible by certain staff members, right, or at certain locations, so.
So, but they couldn't be like, you know, maybe they would scrub from a computer system but use the card strictly at one library and another? but use the card strictly at one library and another, like maybe like a paper person instead of a system person? No?
Well, so I guess that the concern, I mean, we've got a combined total of 14 library employees for two libraries today. So if the concern is that library employees one through seven can see my records, but library employees eight through 14 at the other location can't, I don't believe that there's a solution for that concern.
Okay.
From the ILS standpoint. So we've addressed, well, privacy is addressed in the agreement by saying that it will be, you know, all parties will agree to protect the privacy of all borrower information. It is also one of the fundamental tenants of library staff. I mean, there are, that's just one of those lines that doesn't get crossed. That's one of the few exceptions in the world of public records when it comes to patron records, borrowing history, even video surveillance within libraries is all limited to provide privacy for patrons and what they check out and what materials they look at. Libraries also use different software for browsers. So you delete browser history in between sessions, so people can't go back and figure out what you were browsing.
So my question is, if we take action on this tonight, does that solve the problem of the expiring agreement and save money?
I don't think, I think we can solve that either way. So it's really a question from the council's perspective if you feel like this needs a second reading or not. So either way, we'll, from the city's standpoint, we'll move forward with our TLC renewal. And we just wouldn't implement the consortium component of it for probably another month. If you were interested in taking action tonight, we'd probably move forward and try to have an effective date more like September 1st.
Mary, I do see you. I'm just not calling on you unless a council member has a question.
Something pertinent to add to this discussion, if the council would like to hear it.
Would the council like to hear it?
Sure, sure.
Please come up and speak at the mic.
My name is Stella Mary Anderson. I still live at 928 Peach River. Thank you for considering this. The difference between Cedar Valley and Central Skagit and Jefferson Counties is that Jefferson County currently has a signed agreement, so that all the participants know that their private records are being shared. That is an agreed-upon situation. We do not have a signed agreement with Central Skagit at this time. So persuading a consortium before that written agreement is in place with your signatures could lay the city open to privacy violations, because the people have not, it is not legally recognized that there is a consortium. Yes, there is a precedent for a consortium after documents are signed, not before. So that is something to consider. And there's also another option, Mr. Burke. It is possible for patrons and staff to wipe clean the records, the checkout records of people. I know that people are concerned, patrons are concerned, that their checkout records will be viewed by people who do not have legal authority to look at them. That would be another library that does not have a signed agreement in place. So that's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is the agreement that Jefferson County has with its neighboring libraries. And clearly, we wouldn't have the consortium until after you all approve it and it's signed.
So I guess maybe just to clarify what Mary did ask, she said, so we have the ILAs, the agreements between the two parties, those are, is that different? No?
Not signed.
Okay. Just.
Well, actually, we currently have four interlocal agreements between the city and the district, and this would be the fifth. And this agreement is modeled after the Jefferson County model. So this is the agreement that creates the consortium in Jefferson County. Well, I guess I don't actually understand the comment. This is the agreement that they use to form the basis of that, so.
But it's signed.
Well, and if the city council approves this tonight, we'll sign it too.
Okay. Anything else from counsel?
That's what we're talking about here.
All right. That was a first reading, unless someone wants to take action on it tonight. We'll move on to item 10. Consideration of ordinance amending Cedar Valley Municipal Code 5.04 to include a new class of vendors defined as extension vendors. That's page 73 through 75. Aaron.
Yeah, so this was addressed at your city council meeting last time, and it's an ordinance that's intended to address the issue of mobile vendors in a particular set of circumstances. So to back up, we currently have three different classes of mobile vendors. We've got the mobile vendors who set up somewhere on private property or in a city street, not taking up more than a single parking space, and sell to the public at large. Those mobile vendors are subject to a $1,000 annual business license fee. We currently have none of those. Mobile vendors who come in the same vehicle but park on private property for the purpose of selling product to that private property owner's employees. So the best example would be, I don't know if they still do it, but Judy's Lunchbox used to drive over to Janiki, set up, sell lunch for an hour and hit the road. That mobile vendor pays $35. Now, they can't sell to the general public. They can only sell to the employees of the company that's invited them. The third class currently would be your ice cream mobile vendor. I call it ice cream because that was really the example given at the time. So that's the mobile vendor that cruises around and sells, you know, kind of block to block, but doesn't park and stay on a block for more than 10 minutes at a time. They're $35. So as we heard at the last meeting, the new taproom is, their business model depends on mobile food vendors to come in, set up on private property, and sell to their customers. At the $1,000 price point, you know, if they need five or six or 10 mobile vendors, they were expressing a concern that that seemed cost prohibitive. So what this ordinance does is creates, and this is, by the way, the recommendation of the city council committee that reviewed this issue. This ordinance creates a new class that we're calling extension vendors. They are mobile vendors who operate on private property with the permission of the private property owner, and also are given access to those traditional brick-and-mortar features, including specifically sewer-connected restrooms, tables, and chairs. And they would pay $200 a year per location. So our other mobile vendor, the $1,000 example, could actually cruise to all, you know, who know, as many locations as they chose. This vendor would only be able to go to a spot for the $200 fee, which is similar to how our current business licensing works. So if you open, you know, a business on the corner of Metcalf and Ferry, and you open a second location, you know, across town, you know, we would charge you a business license fee for each of your locations. Same thing in this scenario. So that's what you've got, is proposed modifications to chapter 5.04. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. So with the taproom, when I went to check it out, it looks like they have room for one, one at a time, basically?
That's my understanding.
And so if they were to have multiple, like say, one different one per night, each of those would be a $200 fee?
Under this proposal, yeah, currently, they would each be a $1,000 fee. So yeah, current code would be $1,000 a unit. This would drop that to $200.
This is the recommendation of the committee.
So that would be, the good thing about that, I guess, is they could provide more variety, and it would still cost the same, because they were just paying for the one year.
Yeah, so conceptually, I think the reason for dropping the price is because of the inclusion of those additional, well, two reasons. One is, you know, those traditional brick-and-mortar services. Now, that was a big part of the conversation that went into that original fee setting. But two, these, an extension vendor specifically supports a brick-and-mortar business, you know? So that's different than somebody coming in, you know, the example given when this was first passed was, you know, they're coming in to kind of skim the cream off of the high days, and they hit the road on the low days when the brick-and-mortar folks are suffering. This particular model is there to support and augment the brick-and-mortar business who's here year-round. So they're not here for the cream, they're here to help every time, you know? That's part of the business model.
And the impacts are basically from that business, from, they're not using any city services really, other than just from the business itself.
Well, I guess maybe one way to think of it is, this business, if they wanted to, could put an outdoor kitchen in and accomplish the same mission with their employees.
Mm-hmm.
That's not how they've chosen to do it for a number of reasons, including things like the initial capital outlay. You know, I didn't ask them, but I could guess the cost of buying sewer connections and impact fees and et cetera that go with building permanent facilities, but also the staffing and expertise. You know, I think if you were to ask Jake and his team, they'd say, what we know is beer. We don't know food. We know what we like to eat. And our model is, bring people who know food in to do the food, we'll sell you the beer.
Thank you.
And those have become pretty common practice with several of these brewery areas around the county, so.
Yeah, this is not.
They require that there be something available because of the home microbrews or a stronger alcohol content than.
Yeah.
The mass-produced, so you need some food product to offset the liquidity.
Would it be appropriate to just, I guess, withdraw the $1,000 one and just replace the extension services with it? It's been, how long ago was that? Five years ago?
Yeah, we're still not addressing that $1,000 fee.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I mean, do we, I mean, is it even a category of business that we need?
It's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 1882-17, an ordinance amending Cedar Valley Municipal Code Title V, establishing rules and regulations for the operation and extension of vending businesses.
Second.
Okay, this is the first read.
Oh, is it?
But I have a motion and a second.
Oh.
I have a motion and a second, unless you care to rescind your motion.
No.
But the first read. Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, seconded by Councilmember Lemley, considering an ordinance of the Cedar Valley Municipal Code to include a new class of vendors defined as extension vendors. Further discussion?
Yeah. This doesn't mark.
Brenda.
This still doesn't address the $1,000 fee on the food trucks as it stands right now, which I believe, I believe still needs to be addressed. And I feel $200 is an awful high fee per location. If these guys do want to move around, it's going to cost them that $1,000, which in my opinion is too high a fee.
I have to agree with Brenda. I think, you know, when we created this law, it was either this or nothing at all. We couldn't have them, or we could have them with a $1,000 fee. And I always thought, you know, you know, so, you know, I do believe it's high, too.
We drove the food trucks out. They never came in.
Well, at the time that was done, if you take into account what a brick-and-mortar business pays to operate in our city, I think it exceeds $1,000. So my opinion is, is that it's actually cheap. They choke on it when they see it, but that's because they haven't looked at the real costs of having a brick-and-mortar business in this town. So I'll use a taco truck as an example. So somebody can pull up in front of Mestizo's and open during lunch hour and take Mestizo's business and not pay the appropriate amount? I don't think that's fair to the businesses that have set up in town and, to use Aaron's word, are here for the whole time, not just the cream. That was the intent, I was on the council at that time, that was the intent. It was meant to be a high bar, to protect brick-and-mortar. The change that we're proposing here, we're looking at a new way of doing business. This is actually helping a brick-and-mortar business, and hence the distinction. So that's how I feel about it.
Maybe to address that, Brenda, then try to figure out how to regulate those differently another day and add the second, this third tier. Is that amendable?
I still feel $200 per location is too high.
Personally, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Personally, I think it's, I think it's fair for the whole year. I mean, most likely, they'll be back a few times and not have to pay anything extra.
It could even be the business owner of the brick-and-mortar who's paying that fee. I mean.
Yeah. Well, that's between them.
Yeah.
And they're going to vary who that business is probably from week to week or month to month.
Then they have to pay $200 every.
Well, that's why they would probably have that extension business pay that fee, because they may be in two or three times throughout the year, and let them pay that fee for the right of becoming in here.
But we don't know that.
We don't know how that's going to work between, that's between the two of them, so.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay.
Opposed.
Note for the record that Councilmember Kinzer is opposed, and motion carries.
And that's not because of non-posted future. There's a lot of future.
Okay, moving on to item 11, health benefits for non-represented employees on pages 76 and 77. This is yours, too, Aaron.
And I've given you page 77A on your council days.
Yeah.
So this goes back to 2011. In late 2011, the city council modified health benefit eligibility for non-represented employees, created, they kind of bifurcated by time. So anybody pre-March of '12 had the same benefits as our represented employees. Anybody who was hired or became eligible for benefits after March of 2012 and was not represented by one of our two unions under our three collective bargaining agreements was no longer eligible for health benefits for their dependents at city expense. So pretty significant shift. And what this two-tiered system did at the time, the discussion of the council was, well, we'll do this, and then any of those new people hired, we'll just pay them more. So it kind of works out. We didn't really do that. We've got two employees who became eligible post-March of 2012, and we're in the process right now of hiring a third, you know, exempt, a non-represented exempt employee. And it's problematic for us to have this two-tiered system. So the proposal would delete the two-tiered system, and at the same time, it would shift the non-represented employees to the same shared cost for premiums as the rest of our employees. So currently, non-represented employees pay a fixed cost. For example, I think we pay, you know, $100 a month for co-premiums for a family. Represented employees through collective bargaining process pay 10% of those costs. So this would change effective January 1, it would delete the two-tiered system and move the non-represented to the same 90-10 cost share. So essentially, we would have identical health benefit coverage for all of our full-time employees or employees eligible for health benefits. The page I handed out to you is our dual insurance coverage policy, and the only change on this is striking that December 1, 2011 date that created the two-tiered system. So there's no change to the dual insurance policy, other than to make clear that, you know, if you go with the recommendation on the health benefit. you go with the recommendation on the health benefits by deleting the two-tiered system, then deleting the December 2011 date and the dual insurance coverage goes hand in hand with that. And normally, this is the sort of thing you would see on your consent agenda. It's not on your consent agenda because it was, it was a pretty big topic back in 2011. The council really spent some time working through this.
Any questions from council? Recommended motion is on page 76.
And if you would just modify that motion to include attached personnel policies and to include the revised health benefits and dual insurance coverage, that would be helpful.
Say that again?
Well, the motion would be motion to approve the attached personnel policies-
Plural.
Oh, well, that's because the recommended motion is not well-stated. It should read, "Motion to approve the attached personnel policies, including the health benefits for non-represented employees and the dual insurance coverage policy."
I think I've got it. I move that the city council approved the attached personnel policy, adopted revised health benefits for non-represented employees and dual insurance coverage.
Perfect.
Do you have a question?
Do I hear a second?
And?
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Dunley and seconded by Councilmember Carnegie to adopt the policies, including health benefits for non-represented employees and dual insurance coverage. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. That takes us down to committee reports, and maybe we'll find out what was going on out there.
Sorry about that. So yeah, evidently, it was a guy with his little remote control gas car running up and down Metcalf Street, so.
Oh, thank you.
Sergeant McRae made it stops. That was a good thing. So as you know, we had a little event last night out at the high school, an active threat drill. First of all, thank you, council, for going out and helping notified neighbors. For those, I felt it was really important that they be aware that this was coming, so they don't get scared when they see all the chaos down there. So I appreciate it. And for those of you who showed up, thanks for showing up. Hopefully, you learned something good. I know the police department did. This was our third drill this year. We're hoping to do four a year, kind of one every quarter as we're progressing more, because each time we do this, we learn more and more. This event, we've been planning since probably March of this year, so there's been a lot of effort and labor and manpower put into just getting this coordinated with all the moving parts and getting all the people involved. We had five different law enforcement agencies show up with a total of 24 officers, which is great to have that. Now, Cascade Mall, we had over 200 officers show up in early event. So in real life, we're going to get this times 10. And that's what we're preparing for now that we've gone through sadly a true event. And I was one of the two initial team leaders taking teams into the mall, so I was able to see firsthand what it's like, what to see, what the chaos looks like. And I can share that experience during these drills, which is sadly helpful, but it is important. So we've done that. We're continuing to do that. The school district has been great, helping us. Fire department's been awesome. We're partnering well with them and continuing to do so, so that's where we're at with that.
So I was one of the people who attended, and I can tell you that even though you know it's a drill and you see people walking who are evaluators, who aren't part of it, it's a very emotional experience. I found myself tearing up, and, you know, you wonder why. It's not any worse than something you see on TV, but it's where it is that makes you feel funny. It was very uncomfortable for me, but I think it was great training. And I think the school district, I'm proud of them for doing it because we're the first in the valley to do it like that and pass on our thanks to everybody who came and helped support it. It was fantastic.
Have you noticed the triage, or triage, the moolah, moolage folks? They're the ones that did the makeup and wounded our victims, if you will, you know, with Halloween makeup and props and like a piece of plastic bone sticking out her leg. It was impressive, these makeup artists that did these kids and these adults up. We brought them all shirts so that we could put, you know, blood stains, if you will, on their shirts and cut their shirts. And, you know, that way, when our officers show up, they see that. They see that. It's more realistic for them and for the, you know, any of the first responders. It was against my recommendation that they go in and actually, they wanted to hear the starting pistol go off in the school, and they wanted to see the victims drop. I thought that was a bad idea. The school's like, "No, we want, we want to be prepared for this so in case it happens. We want to get this training part out of the way so we don't just completely break down." And we did have some people that were completely shocked by that, that we did have to get them out and get them some help. But that's why we had those critical stress teams there to assist with that, which was nice. It helped everybody.
Yeah. I know some other council members. Do you have comments?
I found the same thing. It was, it was very, I thought, oh, this would be interesting, you know, see how this all plays out. And I found it to be very emotional, too. And I sure hope it doesn't come down to that ever, not in our school district, but in any school district. And it was amazing because we had the chance to see it on the screen. There were nine different scenes on one screen. And standing in the office, watching all the aides and emergency people come in and then seeing it on the screen, it was pretty dynamic. And my hats off to you. My gosh, what training that must have taken place. It was very unnerving watching it. But I think that's in part because you made it feel very realistic. It was obvious you were taking it very serious, that this is something that you weren't messing around with.
Right.
So I'm very grateful I had the opportunity to experience that. Huge respect. Hats off to all of you.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, too. Thanks for allowing us to be there and participate. And it, being one of the actors there kind of made it a whole lot more real, too, watching the shooter come in and actually watch people drop. And then we ran out and sat out there for a while, but then coming back to the triage area and watching all the medics and everything doing their thing, people being loaded up into the ambulance, taken away. It was real. It stayed real out there. It stayed real, too, because the medics kept coming to check on all of us, say, "Are you still okay? You sure you're not injured?" I mean, it was just incredible, the job they did out there as well. And then I had a chance to talk today to some of the people in the ER at the hospital. And they were, I don't know if they were expecting it to be as real as it was, but the kids, the actors were still in their roles when they got in the hospital, and it made it so real for everybody. So it was a really, really good, great opportunity for everybody.
Good deal. Thank you. Anything else, George?
Todd?
Well, I'll expand on it a little. We did have three fire agencies there, and of course, Central Valley Ambulance there also. We also had private ambulances there. Northwest, well, Northwest Ambulance was there, too. And that's kind of, I think that was a first. We've never really trained with the private ambulances. And something like this, if it ever happened, they are definitely a great resource to use, and we would use them. And so to train with them, I felt was a good idea. And I think they really appreciate the invite, too, of training with us. And we felt it really, the drills went well. You know, the first time had a few hiccups, but the second time, I think, went really, really smooth. Communication was a lot better. It was really good. And so, yeah, thanks Krista for, you know, her work to putting this thing on, too. Of course, it was a big team effort. There was a lot of people involved organizing that, but it was very worthwhile and a good drill. Our department is obviously been extremely busy, as the mayor did give us recognition for that, of course, the one day, and not just the one day, but the year. We've been extremely busy. We are currently training four new volunteer firefighters, kind of in-house training right now. And August 28th, we'll do another training evolution out at the Beatty Homes that are owned by Habitat of Humanity. They're allowing us to train inside the home, do some cuts, wall breaches, stuff like that, kind of damaging the homes, but for training purposes and before they're torn down and building new homes. So that's a great training opportunity for us, and thank you, Habitat of Humanity. I think that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. John, do you have anything?
Well, first of all, thank you for getting the annexation issue squared away. I know it's complicated, and I appreciate working through that. Last month, at the last city council meeting, I reported that we had received a $15,000 grant for the Phase 1 work, and the council passed the motion, so thank you for that again. In the meantime, we've learned that we are 99.9% sure that we'll get the Phase 2 money, which would be about $105,000 to do a Phase 2 study of the actual contamination on the property, the old Cedar Valley Mill site. They don't know when that money is going to be available. They're waiting for the federal dispersion of the money to actually land in the coffers of the Department of Ecology before they're willing to send out an inter-local, or, I'm sorry, inter-agency agreement. So in the meantime, we're going to continue with the Phase 1 study. Technically, that's supposed to be done by October, or late October, but the new inter-agency agreement will allow that timeline to go longer. So this has all been changing hourly. I brought the latest email with me so I could have the most current information, because our consultant and the ecology have changed it over and over. And I think that's all I got for you today. It's been a busy day for planning.
So I just would correct you. On one point, you said to see what actual contamination went, if any, because we don't know that there's any. And that's part of the problem.
They would go out into the site, dig around. The Phase 2 would be the consultant going out, actually digging in the ground, moving dirt, and seeing if there's any contamination in the areas where contamination was expected.
Okay, got it. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. The Cascade Trail project finished basically last weekend. The last sidewalk was poured. DOT did their inspection today and approved the project. We have one wheelchair, or handicap ramp that doesn't quite meet specs. It was a design limitation, and DOT built one on their project that's worse than ours, so we're assuming that if we're going to accept theirs, they'll accept ours, but that remains to be seen. Along that line, DOT, as anybody's went through there, did their contractor Lakeside pave Highway 20 last, or in the last couple of days, and did a pretty good job on that. They should be finishing that up. If they didn't, I didn't make it out that way today, but they should be finishing the drive approaches up in the next few days and closing their project up as well. They'll have to re-stripe. That'll take a little longer. The sewer project, the CIPP sewer project contract has been executed. We don't have a schedule from them yet. We're assuming it's going to start pretty quick. They have to get part of the work done before school comes in session on September 5th, the piece that's underneath the old State Street School. There's also some other private work going on. Out on Jones Road, the contractor is, has installed his dewatering system and will be resuming his sewer construction as soon as that's in place and working, carrying that basically east from Garden of Eden Road to the new 60-some lot subdivision that is there before Sap Road. Also, on Cook Road, Nicholas Court, a subdivision that's underway, is going to be making a road cut of Cook Road. It's well past its moratorium state, and they have to connect the sewer that is on the north side of Cook. And so we originally required a bore, but because of the high-pressure gas main and some other utilities, there's just simply no way to safely do that. So we are allowing them to open and cut that. They've got that scheduled for August the 28th. They did the saw cutting for that today, so Cook Road is going to have a little bit of disruption as they do that work. They'll do it half at a time with flagging and trolls, so I understand that. That's basically what's going on around town, and I thankfully have got those TIB applications off. They were submitted a little bit early last week, and now we wait until November 17th to see the results of that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mark. So I have two questions. First, how long will it be before we get the final striping on the Wash Dot projects?
I actually don't know, but I'm assuming they'll follow right up with, after they complete the paving, we're scheduling that in the next few days and doing that at night as well. So I would assume by the end of next week, we'll see that finished. But I'll find out and report that back to you.
And the second on the cut, I know I've talked about this before, you know, be as particular as we can about how well that thing is patched, because it's so annoying when you have a nice strip of asphalt and then you go in and cut it, and then it's terrible.
They've been told that it has to be very smooth, and so that's what we'll be looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, question for-
Yes, go ahead.
Mark, was it ever part of the program on the Highway 20 project to make a left-hand turn lane into Life Care Center?
Yes, we negotiated that with DOT and actually had tentative approval from them to add it in. Then DOT got caught up in their own rules and simply, they couldn't find any way to approve the very small amount of funds that would have taken to make that modification. I was assuming they were moving ahead with it on the verbal I had received from their Assistant Regional Director. They changed it and didn't inform me and let the contract, and it was simply not going to happen as a result.
We've registered our displeasure for whatever good that does, but we kind of got screwed on it.
Eric and I have a meeting with the Assistant Regional Director coming up on October 3rd, and I'm sure that'll be a topic of discussion, too.
When you show him it's more needed there than it is out in front of Skagit Motel, maybe he'll hang his head and go, "Oops, sorry."
Eric?
Or maybe not. We'll see. We'll let you know after the meeting. The only thing I've got is a request for an executive session tonight to discuss the lease or purchase of real estate, where there's a likelihood that disclosure would increase the purchase price under RCW 4230-1101B for five minutes, and we'll not be requesting any action.
Okay. Patsy?
At the last meeting, the council-
I got all excited about, trying to remember the RCW. I did want to call your attention, I'm sorry, Patsy, to one other item in the packet on page 84, and that's the library pre-design report. So I think probably starting sometime next month, you'll get more formal reports from the Pre-Design Committee on the library project. But on page 84 is a timeline, and I guess the two things I wanted to call your attention to are, one, on September 20th, we'll have a big public community open house in this facility in the evening, so you might want to save the date. That is, that is the third Wednesday of September, so I know you're all free because you're busy on the first, second, and fourth, and there isn't a fifth one that month. And then also, timeline-wise, really by the time you kind of lay out the amount of time that's necessary to work through the process, it's unlikely that you, the city council, or the library board of trustees for the district will receive a completed report, which will include the recommendation of the Pre-Design Committee on the location, conceptual design, and budget until the end of the year, possibly even early January. So, you know, the architects devise this timeline, and really, we just have to take the time that we need to take to go through the process. take the time that we need to take to go through the process and do a good job of it. So there's that report. I apologize for forgetting it the first time.
Now, Patsy?
At the last meeting, the council approved a grant that was presented by Lynn Tucker that went from the federal government to the Washington State Department of Social Health Services, to the city, and then to Skagit Domestic Violence Services for their task force working with commercially sexually exploited children, which it's a long way to get there, the money to flow through. And I definitely was in favor of the grant, even though there was a slight possibility it might put us into that federal single audit and all the extra pain and suffering that goes with that. Well, the day I found out, they called me and said, oh, by the way, it's state money. We have different funding. So more good will come from this money, and we don't have to have a federal single audit as a result of passing that money through to help children in our community. So that was, that was the high point of my day today.
Great. Anything else? Judith?
I don't have anything for today, but I do have to beg your pardon for the next two meetings. I will not be physically able to come.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. Anything else? Jermaine?
Before I forget, I just want to ask, Mark, do you know anything about if they're planning to re-stripe that crosswalk before school? I know it's like right around the corner, but just the other day I was walking over there. The stripes are really worn out, and I know they have a school guard when the, when school's in session over on Highway 9 and McGargo. You know what I'm talking about, where it's really worn.
Yeah, that's, that's a DOT responsibility. They have been out striping crosswalks on the route. I'll have to check, though. I don't know the answer.
Yeah, it's really worn. And I wanted to remind folks about, I don't know, they haven't done a whole lot of advertising, but the Art in a Park is this coming on the 27th, 1 to 5. It's at the Riverfront Park. They're going to have music and art, and supposedly reptiles are going to be there. Wes Jones is performing at 4 o'clock. So, and it's going to be at Riverfront Park this, is that Saturday? Sunday, Sunday to 27th. So there's that. And also, on Friday, there is a Project Homeless Connect at the Skagit Valley College. It's really a great event for anybody, anyone in the community, homeless or not, veterans, for housing, jobs, shelter, parent support services, food services, health insurance, health screening, dental, even free haircuts, you name it. So, and it goes on all day, and it's really well organized. It doesn't seem to take very long, but they're going to be there from 9 to 2, like in that parking lot right where the McIntyre Hall is. That's where they usually have it. So if you know anyone that might need some services, or just send them on over. That's it.
Brenda?
Julia?
First, I just want to say thank you to Todd, the safety meeting that we had and the issues that were brought up. I greatly appreciate the way that you were able to get back with information. That was very helpful, and I know it calmed a lot of nerves. So thank you. Appreciate it. I also want to kind of bring up as consideration before the council, I, we met, the business meeting, business committee meeting, business committee met today, and we talked about the possibility of considering putting apartments in over businesses in Seadrill Woolley. This, again, this is something that, you know, we're just considering, but we need kind of the nod from the council if they are interested in doing this, or interested in having more information brought to them. We looked at things like parking, how would that impact parking? We also looked at the parameters, you know, how far, wide, long in town would we actually give this consideration? And we also talked about tax incentives. So, you know, a tax break for the first eight years for those business owners who want to do it, and if they're wanting to take in lower income, it would be 12 years, I believe I have that right. Is that right, Erin? And you actually went up to Bellingham, saw some buildings that have done this, businesses that have done this, and were quite impressed with it.
Yeah, so John and I went and met with a fellow from the city of Bellingham who administers their multifamily residential property tax exemption program for their downtown area. And he walked us around and showed us a number of examples of successful projects. Separately, I talked to the developer for, I think about 10 or 12 of the 14 or so that had been permitted, and asked about his experiences. So from the Bellingham view, they saw this as a real opportunity to revitalize their downtown. And the employee that John and I met with said, you know, it wasn't too long ago that at 5 o'clock, you know, the doormats rolled up, the doors were locked, and there was nobody here. They've now got hundreds of units of multifamily downtown, so at 5 o'clock, people are just going home and then getting ready to walk downstairs and have a beer, go have dinner, or whatever they like to do. So they, they felt like that had created a core vitality. And so this concept was, of course, presented to the city council by Will Honee from the Woolley Market here, I don't know, a couple months ago, it seems like, as one of the tools that the city has in its toolbox to incentivize redevelopment of, in particular, his request, old buildings downtown. So take your CBD core and, you know, put people upstairs to live there as part of the city process. That would necessitate revitalizing the commercial space downstairs and...
Bring more life into town, revitalize it.
Bring some life downtown, so.
Yeah. So I, we want to move forward with this, but it's, it'll take a lot of research and time investment. And so not wanting to do it if the council's not interested in this. If the council is interested in this, then, you know, we'll happily move forward, but we need a nod from you.
I'm interested, I'm interested in it, but that, so what you're saying is it also includes, like, I guess, getting the buildings up to code for people to live there. That's been like the issue.
Yeah, so specifically, we're talking about RCW 8414, which allows the city to designate a jurisdiction, you know, a geographic area where we want additional housing as a city. So specifically, the city council has the authority to do this. For those areas, the residential component of the development then can be exempted from property tax for either eight or 12 years, as Julie has said, depending upon whether it's market rate rent or lower than market rate rent. The price of participation in this program varies by city. Bellingham requires these developers to enter into a site-specific agreement. And what I'm imagining is if the city council's interested in investigating this further, we'll put together the, the resolution that would kick off the process, the public process that includes the notice, a public hearing, et cetera. But I'm imagining that the price of participation in Seadrill Woolley would be acceptance of design review. So today, our downtown is, you know, we're pretty flexible on design review. We don't have, you know, I would argue, we don't have a lot of teeth in that. But, you know, let's say you're, you want to buy the bowling alley, and you want to put 10 apartments up top. Our code would allow you to do that today. Under this process, you would be able to do exactly the same thing, but pay no tax on the cost differential between the commercial and the residential. So it's only the residential. You still pay taxes on the commercial. And we would then expect you to go through a higher level of design review to ensure that what you're building fits the character of the downtown. So, you know, you kind of voluntarily opt into that. Now, when I say property tax exemption, it's the whole enchilada. It's not just the city portion of the property tax. It's your whole property tax. So if you ever browse around property tax records in the county website, you'll see folks who have the senior exemption. And under that scenario, your house might be worth $450,000, but because you're senior exempt, they just have a deduction for whatever it is, I'll just say $250,000, resulting in a tax value of $200,000, and therefore a deflated tax bill. This process does the same thing, where if you, just purely hypothetical, the bowling alley, you know, you've got a bowling alley that has a tax value, let's just say $200,000, but after you do this big project, it's now $1,002,000, but the million of it was all residential, you would see a million-two tax, a million-two assessed value, a million exemption for a tax value of $200,000. And, and you get that for eight years. So the developer I talked to said that this was more than just, you know, window dressing, that it was a bankable benefit that in planning these projects, he could take this code and this process to the funding entities. I guess they still discount it somehow. He said they kind of appraised the value of the project based upon the income stream, et cetera, et cetera. But it did add to the ability to finance projects and made a big difference. I guess that he did, I think, 12 different projects in Bellingham, and they're, they're nice. So if you go down, just an example, next time you're up there, you want to go visit the old Skagit River Bridge at the farmer's market that we foolishly in our county let leave and go to a cool project somewhere else, go to the farmer's market, wire our old bridge, and then walk a little further down the street, and that whole Moore Square area at the end of railroad are, are a combination of condominiums and apartments over commercial that were built using RCW 8414, is administered by the city of Bellingham. So that's why I say that, and Julia's talking about, there's a little bit more than just, you know, should we do it? It's, if you would like to do it, it will tee up a process that will get started to bring forward for your consideration and public process. And it sounds like, you know, I'm seeing nodding heads, so it sounds like you'd like us to do that. So that's something that John and I'll get started on, but probably...
Trying that there's...
Get some help from Marianne Mandville Ailes at Skagit Surveyors, who does some contract planning work on the design guideline portion of implementing this process. So you may get to have her helping out part of our process in the future.
Anything else, Julia?
No, I think it's exciting. I'm glad that the council's on board with it. One last thing, Toys for Tots. Toys for Tots is this Saturday. Great program. I know that they still have tables available, or you can buy individual seats. Great music, a lot of fun. There'll be food there. I hope you all come out for it. Thank you.
Okay, Chuck?
Yeah, I'd like to remind everyone of the Beer Fest coming the 20th of September. The tickets are $25 apiece, and you get five 8-ounce glasses of beer, which, if everybody drinks 40 ounces of beer, the cop's going to be pretty busy. But anyway, it's for a good cause, and all the profits and proceeds go to the Helping Hands Food Bank. You can get your tickets blow a pin, or you can go online and get them, too.
Thanks, Chuck. Rick?
Yeah, kind of on a professional side note, and for Paula Kelly, who's a member of the Janicki family, they lost one of their own last week. Patrick Janicki passed away. There will be a public celebration of life service at Cascade Middle School Sunday afternoon at 2 o'clock. For those that are Catholic and might want rosary Sunday evening with a formal Catholic mass in Mount Vernon on Monday morning, that, so keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. He was a troubled but a good kid for this community. We've been in Rotary with him for a number of years, and he has done a lot of community service work through Rotary. And will be a tragic loss and a good member to this community. So think of them.
The trees that, at Christmas time, with the lights on them. Patrick was always the one who brought those trees in and helped Joanne put them up and...
Yeah. Skagit County Commissioner Lisa Janicki and husband Mike, who have Janicki Logging Industries and that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Keep the entire family in your thoughts. Good kid.
Okay, for council who are going on the PUD tour tomorrow, just remember to be there. Gotcha. You're all on there. It, we had a chance to have some VIPs in town today down at the, at the farmer's market. Congressman Larson, Senator Pearson, and Ron Weesin came over for the Flash of Silver Awards, and it's always nice to have people like that.
Graham Kerr.
Yeah. Come and pay attention to our community and what's going on. It's kind of a reflection on just all the good things that are going on here. So I enjoyed being a part of that. So at 8:45, we will go into executive under, you want to say it again, since I didn't get my note? Under the previously mentioned...
Yeah, yeah, RCW.
...clause. About five minutes, no action expected.
All right. That is correct.
So we're back from executive at 8:52. Without objection, we stand adjourned.